Well, probably most like, I will never say I'm happy and tell them what you say. One nation under God, and we're never gonna be the same since the war.
Motion for approval of the night's agenda?
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the April 10, 2023 agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next, we'll have a report of the board members.
Yes, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, on Wednesday, April 5th, I got to go, um, have an interview with Mrs. Ramsey at South High for her governance class, for her masters, um, as she works towards her goals as an administrator. Um, and it was about the boards, the school board's role in governing, so it was really good to kind of meet with her and talk about things and what, what we do as board members, um, along that lines. And then the next day, Thursday, April 6th, I was able to attend the Support Staff of the Year breakfast, um, which was a lot of fun to see all of our principals and our amazing, um, support staff from each building, um, and spend time with them.
Thank you.
I was going to report on our Raytown High Girls Basketball Team, but they're here and we're going to hear a lot of good things about them later, so I'll save that for then. And then our performers over here, I got to hear them at a Rotary meeting last, uh, Tuesday and, uh, equally outstanding.
Right.
Right, Mr. President, I got to attend, um, Blue Ridge Elementary's musical for, it's called the, the musical, and it was standing room only. And then I got to, uh, be online for MSBA's Legislative Learn Lunch and Learn Session, just to talk about current policies and Advocacy Day. And this kind of on my own, just various trainings of the MTSS for Intervention Training, uh, Avid Training, Workshops Through Zen Education, Restorative Practices, DEIMB work, and I am looking forward to seeing Into the Woods this weekend.
Right.
Okay, Mr. President. So I know they're going to say a few words, uh, a little bit later, so I don't want to get intertwined with that. So I'm going to say a few words right now, uh, just about, uh, Beth Plank and Terry Landers, uh, their last meeting here on the board, and I just want to say that I appreciate both of you and, and their hard work, and I've learned a lot from each of you, how to be a better board member, especially in the early days, I learned a lot, uh, so appreciate, I mean, you guys are both, they're at all the stuff, all the activities, putting in countless hours. Beth, the last six years, and Terry for 18 years, unbelievable that it's been 18 years, so. So, these two people, no more dedic-, no, nobody more dedicated to the district and to this area than these two, so just, some people said, uh, you know, told me congratulations on winning the election, but I've told Terry and Beth, I'm kind of jealous of you guys right now, actually in some ways, but, uh, I appreciate all you guys have done for us over these last years and all the great input you've had and the direction of the board. So thank you.
President, I also want to tag along behind Rick on this, uh, just Terry is my, he's my buddy, you know, we, we follow each other. When I move, he moves, so I have enjoyed being with, uh, working with Terry and with Beth, I'm just really honored. And a little sad too, that I told Terry earlier that I wanted to tie him to the sea, blew his mouth, and that boy did not leave, but then I thought of Susan, and I figured Susan would not like that too much, so. I changed my mind on this, but I'm gonna miss you guys.
Thank you.
Excellent, well, man, it's been wonderful, my performance.
Yes. It's really been wonderful getting to know you, our kids were in band together, so we go back and, um, just Terry, your level of commitment. And so I'm gonna just echo that both of you will be missed, and I just hope that I can be a tenth of the board member that you guys are. So thank you.
I also would like to, uh, uh, just express, uh, uh, just a sincere thanks for, uh, for you guys and your service to the district and, and just your help for me, uh, being on the board since I got here on the board. Uh, one thing for sure, uh, Terry doesn't say a whole lot, but when he does, everybody's gotta listen. And, uh, I really appreciate that because he, he puts our feedback on the ground. And, uh, and Beth, uh, she just took care of me, uh, the whole time, uh, I've been on the board and president, uh, from the first, when I first got on the board, sitting next to me, she tell me when to, where, what to click on and, and where, and how to move and what to say, she's, a lot of those, uh, letters y'all get, uh, I got to admit that she writes them and I sign them. So, uh, yeah, looking for somebody to do that. But I just want to thank you both and, uh, and wish you, uh, the best in your endeavors from here on. I know you'll still be, uh, very supportive of us.
I did offer to write you a year's worth of letters.
I wasn't, yeah, I got you. So, um, also, uh, I got a chance to participate in the, in the election. I went to a lot of the poll locations and, and, uh, our bonds passed both questions and, and, uh, just looking, uh, just looking forward to what the future has for us. And, uh, and seeing, uh, the basketball team here, I think that's just a great indication of, uh, what's to come. First time ever, um, that we had, uh, Raytown, somebody from Raytown, uh, being state, girls or boys, so, uh, congratulations on that, I know we'll talk about that more and, uh, be at the play as well. So that's the report of the board members. Next, we have, uh, the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the April 20, 23, or April 10th, 2023 consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um, as we take the vote, uh, I want to read off the donations and then, uh, give, uh, Terry and Beth a chance to, to speak. We have a donation of pizza and drinks for staff appreciation worth, uh, $250 from Grand Canyon University to Raytown South High School. We have a donation of swag gifts worth $300 from Grand Canyon University to Raytown South High School. A donation of $100 for delinquent student lunch accounts from Christine Lane to West Ridge Elementary School. A donation of 10 $5 QuickTrip gift cards from Mary Beth Biga, Biga at QuickTrip, uh, to Southwood Elementary. We want to thank everyone that's made donations and we know that they're greatly appreciated, and we greatly appreciate your support, uh, yeah, Raytown School District. Uh, so, Beth, you wanna? Yeah, let's vote. See, she takes care of it. Motion passes.
Um, Mr. President, board members, community, I had to write this down and I'm glad I did, because when I saw Ms. Colster and Ms. Stormock, and I thought, I'm not going to make it through this without crying, so, um, uh, thank you for trusting me. See?
I'll wait to read it.
Yeah. For the past six years, it has been an honor to serve our community. I have grown so much from this experience, and I'm especially grateful for the friendships that I have formed with so many people along this journey. While I will miss many aspects of serving on the school board, I'm also excited for the next step forward. It is due to so many of you that I have been inspired to further my education, um, and attend graduate school in the fall. A task that will take up a lot more of my time, making it difficult to serve in the way I desire. I am excited, um, to pass the baton to Mr. Watson and Dr. Douglas as they continue to lead Raytown alongside my fellow board members. One bit of advice, always remember that we serve our students, our faculty, and parents above ourselves. You will always be successful in your position as you maintain that posture within community service, something I know you both embrace deeply. Thank you again to my fellow board members, administration, and school family for your continuous encouragement and support. I hope I have made this community proud. And this would be the first one that we livestream, because I'm like sobbing like a baby.
Thank you, man. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, introduce my daughter and my wife, Renee Partee, sitting here on the second row. Uh, her and her husband Larry continue to live in Raytown, they graduated from South High School. Renee is active in our community, she's been chairman of the, uh, Raytown Chamber of Commerce, and right now she's president of the, uh, Raytown Educational Foundation, uh, who supports our students with, uh, scholarships and what have you like that. Then my wife Susan for 58 years.
It's catching.
Why did you do that? My wife for 58 years is my rock, my motivation, my inspiration, my encourager, my support, a shoulder to lean on and cry on, and the reason for any success I may have had during my career with Raytown Quality Schools. I started my career at Raytown in the fall of 1965, teaching elementary physical education. Susan started her career in Raytown in the fall of 1966, after teaching one year in North Kansas City. We both had a teaching career of 31 years. I am very fortunate during my career that when I was wanting a new challenge, I was given that opportunity. I wanted to get into coaching, so I moved from elementary to junior high. When I was interested in administration, I was given the opportunity to go to the administration office as coordinator of health and physical education and director of adult and community education. At some point, I wanted to get back to working with students. When the legendary coach Ted Chitwood decided to retire, they wanted to combine the athletic director's position with an assistant principal, but not coaching, and I was offered that opportunity and finished my career at Raytown High School, the last 15 years of retiring in 1996. After retiring, I had a continuous relationship with the district as a volunteer. For many years, I filmed football games at Raytown High School Varsity and ran the scoreboard for the Varsity Boys and Girls Basketball Games. 18 years ago, a group of citizens and teachers approached me about running for the Board of Education, and I was fortunate, I agreed and was fortunate enough to be elected and have served in that capacity for the past 18 years. Rick Moore and I were elected the same year. At that time, Bob Wilson was the longest tenured board member, having served 18 years. Rick, it looks like you're going to break that record, congratulations. Good job. On this wall over here, there are 11 pictures of past two presidents. I am old enough to say that I have worked for all but four, and I knew the one that I didn't work for. I can say that I was on the board that hired two of them, as well as our present superintendent, Dr. Martin Knox. My fellow board members, what we have done as a board to further the opportunities of our students and staff can only be measured by their success in the future. But everything we supported was done with deep compassion and love for students, staff, and community. Thank you for what you do and for allowing me to call you my friend. And I will say this about Bobby, and we've had a great relationship forever and ever, but when Bobby says, "Terry, you better think, maybe I need to rethink what I just said." So she has got it, got something in mind. To the new board members, congratulations, you've been voted into a position that comes with great expectations and responsibility. Board membership is not just one meeting a month, but if done with passion and desire to do what is best for our students and staff, it will be a 24/7, 365-day job. From now on, during your time as a board member, you will not, there will not be a day that you won't think about what our district and what I can or what you can do to help it, to better it. Remember, as an individual, you do not run the district, but you are a part of a past, of a best support group that you could ever be involved with. For the past 58-plus years, everything my family has been involved in has had something type of relationship with Raytown Schools or the city of Raytown. Both the school district and the community have been so kind to us that it's impossible to say thank you to the many individuals by name. So with the fear of leaving out a person, I will just say, thank you, and it's been a great ride. Now, there's one more thing that I need to do. When a person leaves their job or their building or whatever, they're supposed to turn in the key to the executive restroom. Well, this isn't a key to the executive restroom, but I am turning my key in. So when I leave, I can't get back to it. And then, you know, I can't say enough about Rachel for what she's done for me and our district and our board members. Um, she has bailed me out so many times in the past, that I call her, nobody knows this, and she walks me through something. Rachel, you're tremendous, and we thank you, we love you very much.
Next, we'll go into recess. I was going to take, it'll take five minutes to reset.
What about Terry? This is also the only thing I can say.
Order the 2023-24 Board of Education. Um, next on the agenda is the oath of office, uh, for the elected board members.
Dr. Douglas. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge of the duties of the school director in and for the Raytown C2 School District.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the school director in and for the Raytown C2 School District.
County of Jackson, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability, according to law.
County of Jackson, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability, according to law. Thank you. Congratulations.
At this time, we would like to do our elections for the 2023-2024 Board President. Is there a motion for the 2023-2024 Board President?
Second.
So the motion has already been made, that with the second, by Ms. Johnson-Berry. Uh, is there, uh, any other nominations? Upon no further submissions, is there a motion to cease nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Burton, may I hold your gavel? You don't have a gavel?
I don't use it. Thank you very much, uh, board, for the, uh, another year of, of being serving as president. Are there, um, is there a motion for the 2023-24 Board Vice President?
Mr. President. I'm the board-elect, Michael Watson, as vice president of the 2023-24 Board of Education.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Upon no further submissions, is there a motion to cease nomination?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Michael Watson, Board Vice President.
Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Martin Knox. We have a few recognitions this evening. First, congratulations to Melissa Hayes, Geography Teacher at Central Middle School, for being chosen as the District Teacher of the Year for the 2324 School Year. And congratulations to all of the amazing building teachers of the year who we celebrated at a breakfast last month. Additional congratulations to the RQS Fine Arts Program for receiving the District Distinction Award for the Missouri Alliance of Arts Education. And kudos to Raytown South Girls Basketball Coach, Coach Bagsby, for being selected as the Suburban Conference Blue Division Coach of the Year. And you may have heard a little bit about the team across town. Our Ray of Hope Honorees, Raytown High School Lady Blue Jays. And we want to share a little bit more about this amazing team, their coach, and this historic season.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Dunn, the head girls basketball coach at Raytown High School. Um, our team is, has the best chemistry and bond. This has been the most fun we've had since I've been here at Raytown High School. You know, the girls work hard, they fight for each other, they're always encouraging one another. Um, I think that paid a big tribute to why we were successful this season. You know, we had a very tough, tough schedule, um, very competitive. We went across the state line and competed in the Blue Bay North Tournament. And then we also went down to Springfield because we figured we'd probably see those teams if we wanted to go to state. So we really, this season really was about preparing for state. Um, so, and the girls were resilient the whole time. When we went down to Springfield, we were all sick, including myself. And the girls still found a way to just, you know, persevere and just stick together. And uh locked in was our motto this season. So just being locked in the whole time and keeping our mind focused on what our goal was. And everybody has that, you know, set aside their differences and, you know, you're fighting for that one common goal, no matter, you know, who's, you know, you know, who's up or who's down. I think that's why they just set that example throughout the school, just their unity. So creating that bar for all the other athletics or, you know, clubs or no matter grades, all that, because the girls have really good grades as well. So I think they just set the tone just on and off the court about, you know, what it's like to be a student athlete all the way around.
Hi, my name is Summer Yancy. I play at Raytown High School. I am a forward and I am a junior this year. And I recently got a Player of the Year for the District. And that to me is a big accomplishment. Um, I don't think I've ever been named like any type of Player of the Year. So for that, I just want to say thank you to like my coaches and my teammates for putting me on that pedestal and getting me out there to do that. I would say my team really pushed me and my coach to make up new scenarios, you know. I think they really helped me step up in that captain role, you know, play a bigger spot on our team than just putting the ball in the hoop. This team, specifically this year, we did a lot and made a lot of people proud, including myself and everybody else on the team, family, friends, everybody just in the district is really proud of these Lady Jays. And I can be one of those people to be proud of us. I want to say again, thank you to everybody who showed us support throughout this whole journey. It was a tough one from our freshman year up until now, but we've grown as a whole and as individuals. And I'm just extremely proud of everybody that I call my sister on this team.
So I also want to mention that their coach was named District Coach of the Year and Conference Coach of the Year for the second year in a row, and the Eddie Ryan Coach of the Year for Missouri. So congratulations to you all in addition to being our ray of hope for April. The, we have a proclamation from the Missouri House of Representatives, from State Representative Jerome Barnes. And we have one of those for each of you, so I would invite you each to come up. Uh, the team, your coaches.
While you're receiving your certificates, I'd like to read the proclamation to you and the resolution. Whereas the members of the House, Missouri House of Representatives proudly pause to recognize an outstanding group of Missouri high school students who have enjoyed considerable success through steadfast commitment to the highest standard of excellence. And whereas the Raytown High School Girls Basketball Team is to be commended for taking third place at the Missouri State High School Activities Association Class Six State Girls Basketball Championship held March 18th, 2023 at Missouri State University in Springfield. And whereas the Raytown Lady Jays gave their many fans good reason to cheer as they defeated their Eureka Lady Wildcats by a score of 67 to 53 to secure a third place finish. And whereas the Lady Jays have also distinguished themselves as conference champions, district champions, and KMAO, KAMO Tournament Championships. And whereas the Lady Jays finished their impressive season with a record of 25-3 and could not have attained such phenomenal success without the exemplary guidance and leadership provided by head coach Dunn and assistant coaches, Mr. Burge and Tiana Snow. And whereas few high school students possess the athletic skill and stamina of Lady Jays, Amani, Gladys, Macoria, Manaya, Summer, Jada, Leila, and Dreana. And whereas special worth of commendation go out to Dr. Penelope Martin Knox Superintendent, Dr. Chad Roots in Principal, and Dr. Josh Riker, Athletic Director. Now, therefore, it be resolved that we, the members of Missouri House of Representatives, 102nd General Assembly, join in extending our hearty congratulations to the Raytown High School Girls Basketball Team this proud moment of well-deserved distinction. And be it further resolved that the Chief Clerk of the Missouri House of Representatives be instructed to prepare a properly inscribed copy of this resolution for Raytown High School in Raytown, Missouri. And this is offered by Representative Jerome Barnes. And Coach, oftentimes people think that basketball is just basketball. There are lessons that are learned that you're teaching them that they wouldn't learn anywhere else. So I just want to commend you for your work, not just as an educator, not just as a coach, but as a role model for our young league.
And before you guys leave, Mr. President, Dr. Penelope, could the seniors tell us what their plans are after graduation? What's, who's seniors?
I'm on Amani.
Tell us what your plans are. Yeah. Just tell us what, where are you going to go to school or what are your plans after graduation?
Um, I don't, I can't go down to kind of community college for basketball.
Wow.
Okay. This evening, we also have a special performance by Raytown High students who will be singing "No One Is Alone" from the musical Into the Woods, which opens this weekend. Please welcome Jeremiah Washington, Olivia McCarrill, Parker Cobden, and Rayco Grove.
So there was some context. So Into the Woods is a fractured fairy tale story. So you, you're meeting all sorts of different characters from fairy tales that you are well familiar with, such as Cinderella, Little Red Riding Hood, Jack and the Beanstalk. And they're all kind of tied together through an original story of a baker and his wife trying to have a child. Um, and so throughout the story, things go really well and they all get their happily ever afters. And then things go wrong after those happily ever afters. Um, and so they encounter a giant in the second half of the show. Um, and the giant is killing people, stepping on people, and they don't know what to do. And the two younger of the group, um, they seek guidance from two of the older members of the, the group. Um, and so, um, thus, no one is alone.
They are almost finished. You see over there between those two trees? When the giant comes, I'm gonna send her over there.
Good.
I wanted to climb the tree too.
Well, I'm glad you're here to help me. What's wrong?
My granny's gone.
Oh no, I am so sorry.
I think my granny and my mother would be upset with me.
Why?
They said to always make them proud. And now I'm about to kill somebody.
Not somebody, a giant who's been doing harm.
Aren't we to show forgiveness? Mother would be very unhappy with these circumstances.
Now you're on your own. Only me beside you. Still I'm so alone. No one's alone. No one's alone. Sometimes people leave you. Halfway through the world. You speak to say. You decide alone. But no one is alone.
Waiting till mother hears I've slain the giant.
Jack. The mother is dead.
Dead? Was she killed by the giant?
No, she was arguing with the giant, trying to protect you. And she was struck a deadly blow by the Princess Stewart.
Oh no, why would he do that?
He was afraid that she was provoking the giant.
Can no one bring her back?
No one.
That Stewart will pay for this. After we slay the giant, I will slay him.
You will do nothing of the sort.
But he shouldn't have killed my mother, right?
I guess not.
Then he must die.
Well, no.
Why not?
Because that would be wrong.
What he did was wrong. He should be punished.
He will be somehow. I don't know. Stop asking me questions that I can't answer.
Then I'm going to kill him.
Then kill him. No. Don't kill him. It's plain to see.
She knows what she'd said.
Who can say what's
Nothing's quite so clear now.
Things fight things.
Till you've lost your way. You are not alone. One is alone. Will just a thing come. See the slightest flaw. Something's bound to linger. No one has a goal. Careful, no one is a goal. Mistakes, others. Mistakes, holding too dear. Holding too long. Stays. Wanderlust, mistakes. Bitches can be wise, giants can be good. You decide what's right. You decide what's good. Just remember.
Just remember.
Someone makes your song. Our spice, what nice it's not. What we've seen, our song. Maybe we forgot. We're going to love. To see the light shine. Trust me. Smoking torches bright now. You can make it so. Some, some, some. No one is alone.
For the example, I, I just want you to know, okay? Every time you are onstage, I smile here to be from theatrics, the sounds of your voices, absolutely make your marks of excellence. And this is what our entire community needs to see. Because you are what Raytown will you are what children can do, what young adults can do. And so I would encourage you all who are here and those who are watching us on live stream, showing children much of you for your chin and support their talents by coming out this weekend and showing them what you're able to do for them and as they demonstrate their talents. So kudo, thank, thank you.
We're live streaming.
They would have right pitches.
Yes, yes, it was. Next, we'll have our public comment period. Uh, according to Board Policy BDDH, um, five minutes will be allotted to each person except in circumstances where in there six or more, which we only have one today. So, um, thus we'll allow the, uh, maximum of five minutes. And the, uh, the speakers will not be permitted to participate in any gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. We have Amaya Morgan, uh, signed up to, uh, comment on Agenda Item 17.2.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox. I come to you tonight just as a regular student. I have been a student at Raytown for 2063 days. That is 2063 days that I have been sitting in someone's classroom, learning some kind of subject. And I guess this could be classified as a complaint, but oh, let me go back. I accidentally put seventeen point two, but I meant fifteen point one. Wrong agenda item, sorry. But I will be talking about the curriculum committee. So therefore, I believe that Raytown is not creating academically competitive students. As someone who has gone through the advanced track in Raytown for the entirety of probably my 12 years, I believe as a student, I am not academically competitive, according to like college competitiveness and other competitiveness in other aspects. I just want to say, when I was going through my entire college application process, my top colleges were University of Southern California, you know, New York University, and University of Chicago, top colleges in the nation. I mean, I won't, I don't want to say that going to the top college will make someone whole and will make someone better and will make everyone feel good and perfect. But I feel it's sort of concerning that through all of these schools, as someone who has the stats of student body president, four point one, I'm in six extracurriculars, I've taken dual credit, I've been in the challenge program, I've been through it all, as someone who has all of those statistics, to not make it to any of these colleges in the slightest. And I feel it's kind of concerning that over the past few years that I've been in Raytown High, I have not seen anyone attend an Ivy League at all, not at least one. I feel like that is concerning because if we are pushing for academically whole students, that also means we're pushing for motivation and I'm not seeing that in our students. And I feel that comes from three main points, inaccessibility, nontransparency, and exclusivity with our advanced courses. Inaccessibility, as in, some of the time, for me, I like to take creative classes. I was in orchestra, I wanted to be inquired, but that did not happen. I was in journalism and other things like that. Those classes were conflicting with the advanced level courses that we had offered, the very few advanced level courses we had offered conflicted straight with arts and like communications and other things that were required for me to graduate. And that feels really concerning for a student because if I have to pick over orchestra and college world history, that doesn't seem very fair to me as a student who wants to do both and be academically whole. Two, the nontransparency with advanced classes is really an issue. I, as a student, last year took Composition One Ten, a college course, the only college course offered in the English department. I wanted to move on to Composition Two to get my full credit in freshman English. And I signed up for it, I did everything, and then I learned all the way in August that that's not on my schedule and that class isn't offered. That's not fair to me as a student who is trying to go on to go to higher level universities and wants to push herself to be in these advanced classes. And I can't find out till I step into the school again that I'm not offered these courses. That kind of behavior, when it comes to advanced classes, is very, very common, not just in the English department. I have signed up for AP Statistics three times and none of those times I have taken AP Statistics, simply because no one told me it wasn't offered. It was on the list, I signed up for it, they told me, oh, it's good, it's great, we got it. And it wasn't there. That is not fair to me as a student who, one, needs to take these AP classes to seem an academically competitive student, and, two, just wants to push herself. And I can't push myself and I'm put back in these lower level classes where I don't feel motivated or pushed in a learning sense. And I feel like there's a strong sense of exclusivity when it comes to advanced courses. That roots back all the way from elementary school. I was a part of the challenge program and I do think the challenge program is beneficial and helpful. But when you're seeing your peers go off into a bus and go to some different school and they get to engineer and they get to dissect and they get to do all these fun things and they come back and they're telling all the other kids how much fun they had and all that stuff. And the other kids are sitting there like, why am I not offered that? Why couldn't I get that? It's those under the table deals that I don't think is fair. And then moving on to middle school, well, I've been put through every single advanced course and every single core subject, and every single time, it felt like an under the table situation. I was handed a letter that I had to take home to my parents to sign up for some advanced course. Why is this not, why are we not telling our students what is offered? Why are we not telling them there is a way to push yourself and motivate yourself to go higher? And I also feel like when we come to dual credit in the AP, we are not offering enough to show these other colleges or these other schools that we are giving the students good enough academic quality in terms of advanced learning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Amaya. Next, we'll have the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Watson, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and of our school district community. And before I get into the items that are listed, I want to bring your attention to Item five point fourteen. As a result of the election, we have a very special message that has been created by our students for our community, just to demonstrate and to clearly communicate our appreciation for all that you have done and continue to do for Raytown schools. Our theme this year was, or is, a ray of hope. And I just want you all to know that you are our ray of hope.
Thank you, Raytown voters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Raytown, thank you for voting yes on the bond question, the facility bond question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you, Raytown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you for passing the bond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you for passing the bond.
I saw it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias por decir sí en la pregunta de la posibilidad de Raytown.
And there you have it. You've heard it here first, from the mouths of our children extending a sincere appreciation for you, the Raytown Quality Schools community. April fourth is behind us, and without you, we would not be positioned to provide our children with quality environments where they can receive rigorous instruction and be globally competitive with their peers. We thank you for coming together and exercising your right to vote. Your continued support is truly appreciated. And on behalf of the Raytown Quality Schools, we say thank you to our greater community. Thank you for your support. And so no matter what language, you heard it, it all means the same. Thank you. Truly. We also wanted to make sure that we, as a community, continue to recognize the diversity and how beautiful it is within our schools and within our community. So that was the work behind that. And I just wanted to publicly thank our Communications Department for putting that together for us. So thank you again, Mrs. Womble. If we would go down to the report of the superintendent, I'd like to go down to Item fourteen point six with the discussion of the Challenge Program Alternative Identification Proposal with Dr. Greiner in team.
Good evening, President Burton, Vice President Watson, and congratulations. Congratulations. I'd like to introduce today, my name is Anthony Moore, and I'm responsible for elementary schools. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Matt Jones, I'm sorry, Principal of West Ridge Elementary, and, okay, Felicia Storm, to talk about the Alternative Identification Plan.
Good evening. So talk a little bit about an alternative plan that we're developed and going into place for the gifted program. First off, an alternative identification plan is, through research and studies, DESI identified that the potentially districts have inequitable practices and how we potentially identify gifted students. And so they have offered the opportunity for districts to develop an alternative plan that might deviate from the criteria they have set and what they would consider is deemed a gifted student. And the two main recommendations they have as a part of plans, the first is implementing a universal screener. So not just relying potentially on parent or teacher referrals or even academic scores, but a screening, for us, screening all first graders with our universal screener, potentially identify students who may be gifted. And then also going through a process of establishing local norms. So part of the process is identifying students that are in the ninety-fifth percentile. And so instead of just solely looking at those percentiles on a national basis, using Raytown scores and creating local norms in the ninety-fifth percentile for us and our community and the students that fall within that, and ensuring that those, by starting in those two areas, it kind of inhibits any potential barriers that we might have. One of the key elements that DESI uses is something called the twenty percent equity index. And essentially what that is, is it would be ideal that what our subgroups are, whether it's based on any sort of minority population, whether it is ethnicity, whether it is SELD or income-based, all different areas and how we can look at how we identify students. And in an ideal situation, if we have a hundred kids and ten percent of those kids fall in a particular subgroup, we would want the gifted program to be represented as well, at least ten percent of that group be represented by that subgroup. What DESI says is, although that is ideal, we also understand that there's some things that come into play that why that may not necessarily happen. So in the scenario I gave you, our ideal goal would be that eight percent of particular subgroup A would be a part of our gifted program for that twenty percent equity index that we have. And when we look at our totals for Raytown right now, most of our schools do not meet that twenty percent equity index. Currently, right now, two of the schools meet them, four of them, though, four additional ones are within less than five percent away. So really, we're talking a handful of kids of having at least six of the 10 elementary schools represented based on the subgroup demographics that we have for their buildings. So a few changes that we have made as a part of this plan, first was we switched from using two assessments. One was called the COGAT for our initial screener and I've switched to something called the NNA T. It's Dr. Negliari developed this assessment and we made this switch because the COGAT, and these are all both cognitive screeners that we use to move on to a formal IQ assessment. And the COGAT assessment, one of the barriers that research shows in equities is things that have about vocabulary and those kind of areas tend to have a bit of a bias on their assessments. And the benefit of the Negliari, the NNA T, it is pure visual spatial reasoning. It doesn't ask any questions about vocabulary, it's just all about their thinking process. And research has shown for it to be more of an equitable screener and better at identifying students of all makes and backgrounds. I'll let Miss Storm talk a little bit about, we made a change to our staff professional development and how we go to buildings and what we discussed at the beginning of the year before referrals.
So traditionally, we would go in and tell staff about what to look for in gifted students and things to watch out for that typical gifted students present. But this time, we had that on the back burner. We did discuss a little bit of that, but we showed schools their numbers, their data, what their subcategories looked like. We had open, honest conversations about it, what they thought they could do better, what they were doing that was working. And we really just, we wanted to gather information from the schools that were meeting their equity line and take that knowledge and spread it, but also to kind of make them aware of where their numbers were. And because of that, I feel like we saw a lot more referrals. So I feel like it was a success.
We did, I think our numbers and referrals increased this year by twenty-four percent compared to last year. And a benefit of that is it increased by twenty-four percent, but our bottom line of how many kids have moved on to the IQ did not change till about a third of them. So we were worried that although we added more referrals, we just got a bunch more names that didn't move on in the process, and that wasn't the case. It didn't dilute our totals, which we're really excited about. And the last change that we've already made is started to accept academic scores with the NWA assessment that we use for reading and math, as well as the state map test at the end of the year. In the past, we had, before NWA, we had an assessment called STAR, and we stopped doing the math portion of that. And since we didn't have both scores, we didn't include those. We didn't continue to use those data points. And then DESI changed the state assessment. And so now it's back normed and consistent again. And so we're able to begin to use those scores. And if students achieve advanced in any of those areas or one of the indicators that we can immediately do to identify a student as well. Some potential changes that are coming as a part of this plan. First, as I mentioned, we're going to adopt using the NNA T as a universal screener for all first graders in the spring. So no student has to be referred or there's still opportunities for that to happen. But every first grader will get to screen and potentially identify starting there. We're going to begin something, an intervention group with kindergarten and first graders. One of the things that we know is that even still with some of the barriers that we try to remove, that there still can be bias, there still can be barriers that prevent a student from maybe truly showing everything that they know. And so I kind of equate it to a coach, a person can be born with all the greatest sport talent in the world, but when a coach gets there and works with that talent, that's when their true ability starts to shine. And so our goal with these K-one intervention groups is to have the challenge teachers push into buildings, work with kindergarten and first graders on these type of skills, on this type of thinking to get those muscles working. So when we do the universal screen in first grade, they're more apt to show their true ability and maybe not get hung up on something that they weren't familiar with or questions that they never even really even thought to consider before and see what impact that might have on identifying students. As I mentioned, we have the use of academic scores in NWA on the map test. And then, starting next year, we're also going to look at the assessment tools that we use to identify cognitive abilities, essentially their IQ scores. Typically, we use the WISK assessment, but sometimes we know that there are other barriers, especially in the language area and vocabulary, that we can consider other assessments if the battery of tests shows us like, oh, man, this kid is on the line. We see it on all these other areas, but vocabulary for maybe they're an ELL student and English vocabulary is obviously going to be a little bit low for them. Are there other tools or measures that we can substitute that to get a better, well-rounded picture of where the student is and that doesn't hang them up from being identified and being in to join the program? And then the last piece is our overall, I think the biggest impact that we'll have is establishing local norms for our NWA scores and for the NNA T scores. We need a couple of years of consistent scores in to be able to do that. So our goal is that in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we're able to identify and no longer simply lean on the ninety-fifth percentile as a nation and more so of what the ninety-fifth percentile looks like in Raytown using those scores. I'm also considering looking at regardless what scores or what are the ninety-fifth percentile in our buildings, how is that represented within each individual populations of each area? Any thoughts or questions?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is fantastic. Sounds like one of the better things DESI's done in a while.
That's, yeah, it's been nice.
Yeah, I've been pushing for us to do wider range of screening for a long time. So this is great because I think there's a lot of kids out there who need to be in challenge. You just are passed over by our current methods. Will this end up putting more kids in challenge, though? Or will we balance it out and keep the same number of kids that are in there now?
Well, if everything works like it should, we'll identify more kids. And so we'll need to have, DESI does have suggestions on class sizes. I think the ideal, nothing less than ten and ideally around sixteen. And so we are in open conversations about doing the best that we can to ensure that we're respecting class sizes as needed for the program.
Well, we want as many kids as can qualify to be in it. So if we need to devote some more resources to it, then that's what we need to look at.
Absolutely.
That's fantastic, but we can't start it till the twenty-four, twenty-five year?
We'll start everything but the developing the local norms until the twenty-four, twenty-five year. So all these other things essentially will be in place starting next year.
All right, great, thank you.
So I know we have a number of components to help qualify our students. Can you speak just a little more specifically to the NWA and map? I just know not everyone's the best test taker when it comes to those types of things, which I know we have a range of being able to identify students. So can you talk a little bit about if that is going to be more heavy that way? How will we have the balance?
Yeah. And it's, I would say, one way is not more heavy than the other. It's just an additional point that tells us, and if anything, where we'll lean most on those academic measures, because you're absolutely right, especially although ideal, you would think, oh, gifted student, well, then they would be doing great academically. Well, so often, that doesn't immediately show itself, especially in standardized tests like this. So we don't want to over So we don't want to overweight that and because we know we're actually going to miss students that way. So the biggest weight that the N W A or the state test has is that if a student scores in the ninety-fifth percentile. In either math or E L A on the N W A, or if they were to be advanced in math or in the E L A portion. They would skip everything and go straight to IQ. So it actually just makes it a little bit easier for them to go through the process. We'll still have the universal screening for first graders and then if a student didn't get screened in first grade, we still have open parent and teacher referral. For challenge, so the screening will begin in first grade, but the initial classes will start and formally start in second grade.
But after that, that's.
Second through fifth is at the elementary level.
Yeah, I'm just asking if older kids can.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, yes.
With the, the Desi's twenty percent equity index, what are the qualifications or how do they come up with? It says the twenty percent allows for cultural and environmental factors. How does it, how they, do they come up with that and we?
That's just, yeah, that's, that's, that twenty percent measure is just what they have given us within their criteria that they have, yeah.
That's based off the, off the scoring, the test scoring or?
So no, that's saying like, let's say if one subgroup is. You know, free and reduced. So essentially they just say, based on this subgroup, if. Twenty percent or if ten percent of your building fall in that subgroup. They would just allow a deviation to say, hey, our goal would be to at least have eight percent of those, that subgroup is a part of the program. It's just kind of a measure, a measuring stick that I think they gave us. I don't really know what all went into them deciding twenty percent was appropriate.
Got you. Thank you.
No problem.
You have other questions?
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you, team. The next item under the superintendent's report is fourteen point seven, which is student representatives report, our representatives from student council. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox. Like last time, we had a lot of awards going around. Again, we have a lot of awards going around, so we're doing pretty good. Over spring break, the newspaper and journalism classes went to Journalism Day at University of Missouri, which was. A big like forum for like discussion about different sections of journalism, sports broadcasting, newspaper, yearbook. Broadcasting in general, all that stuff. And there was also awards that we could submit for competitions. So I'm going to toot my own horn a little bit. I won best of show, which is like first place for a story about our principal, Dr. Bruton. Markeia Donahue won all Missouri, which is about second place for a story on new teachers of Raytown High. I won a superior rating, which is like third place for the Christmas tree lighting that we had with our singers. And then Diane Para and Aaron Seals won a superior rating for their story on fit checks. Kenneth Grigsby won an excellent rating, which was like fourth place for his video on the girls' basketball season. And then we had two honorable mentions, Haley Anderson on her story for the G S A. And our entire broadcasting staff honorable mention for our weekly announcements. So we're doing pretty good in the journalism aspect. And then we also, our student council went to. Missouri Association of Student Councils holds a state convention. At that state convention, we won the student council gold honor award, which basically means we as a student council do a lot of things. To make sure that our students are feeling good and feeling safe in their schools and all aspects of spirit, service, fundraising, appreciation, all of the things. And just, it just tells us that we're doing a pretty good job in terms of student council standing. And then, oh, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Eliza Soria. I am currently a junior and I am one of a candidate for. Class, senior class president. And today I'm going to talk to you about our prom. Our prom is held on April twenty-ninth and it's going to be at the Hilton Garden in the Hotel Independence. And our theme this year we decided is enchanted. And so far our prom committee has worked extremely hard every single day this past month. To coming in and decorating and making our invitations and just study stepping outside of our normal. Like routine of how we usually do stuff. For example, our invitations normally we make. Like rectangle, just plain information. This year we created. A square and it had a butterfly where it opened up and it had all our information. So we're just all about stepping outside of our normal, making it more. Like have a more special experience for our seniors and juniors attending. That's it, thank you.
And then our annual hunger games is coming up. If you don't know what the hunger games is, it's essentially a big district wide competition. Essentially to see who can raise the most food items for our REAP organization in the city. So that is this week and next week, and then we'll also be at Hy-Vee April twenty-second. Outstanding outside the door, seeing if we can grab extra donations that way. And we're very, very excited and very, very pumped up because this is our biggest service project of the year. So we're very excited to be doing this. And then we also had another service project for the Kansas City Pet Project. We had a project where we collected or people could donate like blankets, old food that they had that like peanut butter and stuff like that. Or old dog collars that they had and we had two hundred items go out to Casey Pet Project. So we're very, very proud of that. And then also, if you didn't know, go see Into the Woods this weekend, Thursday through Saturday, thirteen through the fifteen. Purchase your tickets at show ticks, ticks with X, four, for you with the U dot com. Thank you.
That concluded the report of the superintendent.
Next we'll have our board committee reports, but prior to that, I want to ask. Dr. Madeline Douglas to introduce herself and anyone that she may be here to. Witness her first day on the school board.
Hi, I'm Dr. Madeline Douglas and I want to. Thank each and every one of you who voted, regardless of who you voted for, I'm glad you got out and voted. I'm glad to be here and I came here to that night and came here in this position because I've been telling people because I care. I actually care what happens to our young people, those young people that came forth. I want you to know, we hear you. I hear you, we hear you. I brought my sister with me who goes to everything with me. If y'all want to know how I won, somebody asked me, how in the world? Did you win that competition? I have, I'm the second of nineteen children. And my sisters and sisters in particular were on the ground. You probably seen these little look alike, Dr. Douglas's, those are my younger sisters. And any of you have seen the movie The Woman King? How many seen the movie The Woman King? Well, my niece, you want to, want to raise your hand, that's my niece, that's Nowy. From The Woman King. And if it looks like her auntie is in anything, she will, she will. She got the knife. So she's going to fight the battle. So I want to thank them, I want to thank my family and I want to thank this board. Thank the friends on the board who have just been wonderful and everybody that we ran with. I met friends, so what regardless of who won or lost, I got some new friends that I'm sticking with. Throughout this, throughout the journey. Alright, thank you guys.
Mr. Watts?
Thank you, thank you. My name is Michael Watson. I appreciate the opportunity to serve with the Raytown School District. It was a fun journey throughout the process. Appreciate everyone who voted for me. No one likes me, so no one came out for my family tonight. No, my son, my, they're just like, whatever, retired of you. No, my, my children, so I have two daughters who graduated from the district, one is at North Missouri State, she's a senior, the other is a freshman at. Kansas City Kansas Community College playing volleyball. And then I have a fifth grader here in the district as well. And so I'm, I'm excited just to serve on the board. I'm excited about the leadership in the district. The trajectory and being able to just usher in a new, a new season with Raytown Quality Schools. To take us even further along. I appreciate everyone in the board for welcoming me to, to the board and I look forward to just being a servant.
Well, thank you both. We already heard from Rick, no?
My wife says, do I have to go? So no, no, it's.
Alright, next we'll have our committee report. Do you have anything from the finance committee? Policy committee? Ms. Bobby, microphone.
No, you can hear me, okay. The committee discussed policy A C I C, equity and inclusion, and will move it to the April tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting agenda for first read. The committee discussed policy B C, D V agendas and B D D H. Public participation at board meetings and will reach out to M S B A for additional information and will move. These policies to the April tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting agenda for first read. The committee discussed policy I G C D, virtual courses and I G. C D A full-time M O C A P virtual courses and will move these to the April tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting. Agenda for first read. The committee discussed policy J E C A eligibility. To enroll and will move it to the April tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting agenda for first read. The committee discussed policy K C, community. Involvement in decision makings and will add this policy to the next citizen advisory committee agenda. And to the April tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting agenda for first read. The committee discussed policy J F C I, student drug testing and will move the. Deletion of the policy to the April tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting agenda for first read. The following policies will be moved to May eighth, twenty twenty-three board meeting review agenda for review. Animal policy E G, E C G, animals on district property. Discipline regulations, policies, procedures, J C student discipline. J C, J G, I'm sorry, J C, J G R one, student discipline. J C B detention and R in schools. Supervisions of students, J G, J G D students, suspension and expulsion. These will be moved to our next meeting. A board member, B B C, board member resignation review also will be moved to our next meeting in May.
Thank you. Do you have anything from our curriculum? And instruction? And as far as the other committees, they will also be meeting in, within the next month. And have a report at our May meeting. And as far as the new members, the older members now will be making the committee assignments. Based on our new formation for this year. Alright. Next we'll have. Oh, I need a motion. For the policy committee, sorry.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next, in unfinished business, we'll discuss board member vacancy information. We have applicants, Jules Sneddon. Thomas Barock, David Whistler, Thomas Granger, Eslyn. Nody Newton the third. The application deadline was April sixth, twenty twenty-three. We are. Going to be, we're going to ask each member to select, go through the applications and select the top three. People to interview. We'll individually send those selections that you make to myself and Rachel, copy Rachel. And, and then I will tally those votes, the top, your top vote getter will get three votes. Second one gets two votes, third gets one vote. And then once that selection is made for interview, we'll reach out to those. To those candidates to inform them of the date for the interview. We'll decide on that date this evening and have those candidates come in. And at that time, after the interviews, we'll also craft the questions that we're going to come up with. Probably have those sent to me when you make your selection. And then we'll, we will. We will ask those candidates to come for the interview and we'll make the selection that night. And, and also have us, have you make that appointment that night and have you join us. As a member of the board to fill our open seat. There any other, you guys have any questions in regards to? Or discussion?
I just have one clarifying question. So we're just supposed to submit our top three choices. We're not supposed, we don't need to rank those ourselves.
Yes, three, two, one, and the votes, your top vote, you get. Three votes, two votes, then one. So a deadline for that will be. We need to do that in a couple of days. The deadline for that, that selection will be the twelfth of April. Alright, further discussion?
It doesn't matter to me, I just don't want to be any confusion, but if Rachel just sent a email today saying the fourteenth was going to be the deadline, so. Okay, but we just need to make sure we're all, the people aren't read different things.
Any further discussion? Alright, see you none. Next we'll have the appointment of a delegate and alternate to attend the Missouri School Board Association twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three Nightingra ideas Summit. The summit will be held June sixteenth or seventeenth in Branson, Missouri. The summit features numerous workshops and sessions designed to improve leadership. And skills in the governance of, of school districts. Anybody? Interested?
I'll be your alternate.
I was just going to suggest, you know, I mean, anyone can go, but Madeline or Michael, I would suggest if you can, it's good learning. It's a good time to get some quick learning if you're able to, but I mean, any board member can go, so you don't have to be.
You know what you signed up for.
Anybody can be the delegate.
I, I definitely plan on going. I definitely plan on going, but I would let someone else.
I planned on it anyhow. I just wanted to see if Rick was going to go first.
I might go, but if you want to be the delegate, that's a good idea.
All right. So we'll have Michael may be the delegate and Natalie is the alternate. And Rick and I'll see you guys there. Is it, it's not the same time? It's probably not anymore. Well, that was COVID year. Yeah. That's where I went. Okay. You could make a whole week of it. All right. I think next we'll have new business. Well, the district Report Card and Annual Performance Report.
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox, President Burton, Vice President Watson. Good evening. Welcome. Dr. Douglas. It's my pleasure tonight, Board, to share some information that was publicly released back in March. The Department of Elementary Secondary Education produce an annual report that provides a snapshot look at all school districts in the state, all public school districts. And there are a couple of documents that I want to share with you tonight that are really a look back to the 2122 school year. As, as you might know, we are in the process of developing the district's next strategic plan, which is exciting to look ahead, to see where we are going as a school district, what are our priorities, and what are the areas that we need to grow. And certainly the information shared tonight with the board and the community will be part of that journey to decide where are the priorities of the school district moving forward to best meet the needs of all of our students. So I apologize in advance for the lack of brevity of tonight's presentation. There's a lot of information to share. I want to make sure that you have an opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. Know that this information that I'm sharing tonight will help inform some of the high priority work that we are, we are looking at, implementing not only this school year, but into future school years. And certainly our district strategic plan will, will represent these priorities as well. So we'll begin with the district report card. So the information again that I'm sharing with you tonight is from the 2122 school year. Several different categories that we will look at, proportional attendance rate, graduation rate, dropout rate, an alumni follow-up survey that happens 180 days after the graduates leave Raytown. We're also looking at performance of our students on state assessments, our Missouri Assessment Program, grades three through eight, our end-of-course assessments, which are at the high school for ELA, math, science, and social studies, and then also our ACT results as a district. So we'll start with proportional attendance. And before I begin to go through the different categories, part of this look is to have context of some comparison districts. So we thought it was important not only to share information about Raytown Quality Schools, but also do that in the context of other districts that we benchmark ourselves against here in the KC Metro. So we'll look at our data compared to the state, but then also look at our data compared to some benchmark districts around us. So those districts are, I'm sorry, go back, Center, Grandview, Hickman Mills, Independence, and KC Mo. So we'll start with proportional attendance rate, which is the percentage of our students that are attending at least 90% of the time. You could see that Missouri and Raytown both saw declines in their proportional attendance rate. In 2122, we saw a decline of almost 15% compared to 2021. When looking at our attendance rate compared to our comparable districts, you can see that Raytown ranked second. Across the board, districts really struggled with attendance in 2122. Coming out of the pandemic, we saw families struggling to support their students with getting them to school more regularly for a variety of reasons. And so schools obviously are working hard to meet the needs of those families to get students to school. But you, as you can see from the data across the board, attendance was a struggle for many districts in the state of Missouri. Moving on to graduation rate, in 2122, Raytown graduated in their four-year cohort. So students that started as freshmen and graduated four years later, we graduated 80.8% of our seniors. That represented a, about a 1% decline from the year before. The state saw a slight increase. When we look at our comparison districts, Raytown ranked fourth amongst those, those districts, so fourth out of sixth. And you can see most districts did see a drop in their graduation rate compared to the previous year. Next dropout rate. So the percentage of students that did not complete in that four-year cohort to graduate on time or did not continue on in a fifth or sixth year program. So these are students that we've lost contact with completely. We saw an increase of almost 5% in dropouts in 2122. The state did see a slight increase in their dropout percentage as well. Comparatively, Raytown ranked fourth out of six, with all districts seeing an increase in their dropout rate compared to previous, the previous year. Next is the 180-day follow-up survey that we send to our, our graduates. This asks them a question about what they're up to after graduation, and we connect that to coursework that they have taken while in high school. So the idea is that a pathway that they chose to pursue in high school connects with whatever they're involved in 180 days after graduation. So that could be they are going to college, they are in tech school, they're in the military, they are working productively in an area that they had an interest in while they were in high school. We saw a slight increase in that percentage of connection with our graduates. 87.8% of our graduates participated in the follow-up survey. That, that growth was slightly higher than what the state saw. Again, in comparison to our benchmark districts, Raytown ranked fourth out of six with that 87.8% percentage. Next, we'll move on to student achievement of our English Language Arts Test Takers. So again, grades three through eight, take the MAP test, and students in English II, their sophomore year, take the end-of-course assessment. In the 2122 school year, we saw 29.4% of our students participating, scoring proficient or better, so on-grade level or better performance. That was a slight increase over 2021. And again, you could see the gap between Raytown's performance and the state average. In terms of rank, Raytown Quality Schools ranked third out of the six benchmark districts. We again saw a small increase in our performance and most districts saw actually a decrease in performance from, from 2021. Moving on to math, in the 2122 school year, Raytown saw growth of 4% in the percentage of students performing on grade level. That was commensurate with the state in terms of percentage of growth. Again, in comparing us to benchmark districts, Raytown was fourth out of six, but again, showed a solid percentage of growth from the 2021 school year. Onto science. Our science students take the MAP test in fifth and eighth grade, and then an end-of-course assessment in biology typically in their sophomore year of high school. Our students saw just over 4% growth in on-grade level achievers, where the states saw less than 1%. Raytown ranked second in benchmark districts in science performance, again with a 4.2% growth over the 2021 school year. Social studies performance is only measured at the high school level with the American Government End-of-Course Assessment. Typically, students take that their 11th grade year. In 2122, Raytown saw a slight decline in their performance. The state also saw a decline in the percent proficient or advanced. When we look at our comparison districts, Raytown ranked fourth out of six. Finally, from the report card, ACT scores. In 2122, our composite average was 18.8. So our graduates that took the ACT assessment scored on average 18.8. That was a slight decline from 2021 and a bit smaller decline than what the state saw comparing 2021 to 2122. Raytown ranked second out of six school districts with composite ACT scores. And you can see that districts saw either some small decrease or minimal growth compared to 2020, 2021. So that's, I'll pause there. Again, a lot of information to share about the district report card. Any questions from the board at this point regarding the district report card?
With the ACT, the last one, do we have any ACT prep courses or practice tests that we offer?
Good question. Currently, we do not offer any formal ACT prep classes during the school day. That certainly is something we are interested in changing moving forward. But we currently do not offer a four-credit ACT prep class at either of the high schools.
And so to follow up on that, because I think that was a question that I discussed at some point in time, because I know for some of these colleges and universities, those scholarships that the students get depend on some of that, that, that performance. So I, yeah, I would like to explore that further. But my question is, when we're looking at those, our attendance at the 90% rate that we want more of our students to have, can you just share a little bit with, just with our community on those interventions that we're going to be exploring or just ideas on those interventions? Since that's like a really critical piece.
Yes, I agree. So part of the work this year, in my work with building principals and school leadership teams, has been really to investigate, what are some of the causes of why we're seeing our students missing a greater frequency of school, not attending as frequently, and just missing more class? There are a variety of reasons for that. And a lot of that work comes down to being very intentional to build a plan around each individual student and their circumstances. We have some great work happening right now already, but we actually are kicking off a district-wide committee tomorrow night called the Equity Council. And one of the things that we'll be investigating as a district committee will be the ways in which we can build more belongingness and attachment for our students to our schools. Moving into next school year, each of our schools, as part of their school progress plan, will have a specific goal around 90 for 90 attendance. And we will be working very systematically with each school to develop plans on how we can reach our students and families and really reiterate the importance of them attending on a regular basis. So there's some really good committee work in front of us the next few months, but we're excited to launch that work to be very intentional for the 2324 school year. Yeah, so we have over 90 staff members across the district, across each of our levels, early childhood, elementary, middle, and high. They represent a variety of roles from administrator to teacher to interventionist, to counselor, to social worker. So we're bringing that, that group of stakeholders together to really purposefully look at how we can better meet the needs of our students, not just with what the instruction that all kids get, which is tier one, but how are we being systematic and timely with interventions for not only their academic needs, but also their social emotional needs as well. So that district-wide committee will kick off, will be working through the spring and summer so that we can launch and align to our district strategic plan, ready for the 2324 school year with some really robust school progress plans.
And I just had just another quick one. For the 180-day follow-up, are we capturing the majority of our graduates' responses? What does that look like in terms of making sure that we're, we're reaching all of them or as close to all as possible?
Yeah, so schools do a great job of, through their counseling departments, reaching out to their graduates from the prior year. They'll use really any way to contact those families, whether it's through by phone or email or even social networking. So they'll look to find those kids on Instagram, Facebook, any of the ways in which, you know, our students are communicating. We, we seek them out to then find out what they're up to. So just the traditional ways of maybe just reaching out to the family or an email address. We also are pursuing social media to try to track those kids down and find out what they're up to. Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions from the board about the report card? So we'll switch gears to talk about the annual performance report. And the APR is new, new and improved this year from the state as part of MSIP VI. MSIP VI is the accreditation process by which all public school districts in the state of Missouri are vetted against. Before we get into the data, I will say first and foremost, Raytown Quality Schools is fully accredited. And through this process, it is a three-year data process where we're gathering three years, three school years worth of data. So the data that I'll be sharing with you tonight is data from the 2122 school year. That represents year one of a three-year aggregate. And so again, some of the information that I'll share with you tonight is where Raytown Quality Schools stands today, but knowing we have two additional years to show improvement and, and maintain full accreditation. So we're, we're excited about the opportunity to grow, but I also wanted to make sure that the board understood that we are fully accredited and will continue to be through this process. So our APR is broken into two categories, performance and continuous improvement. So the state looks at how are we performing on high-stakes assessments and how are we showing growth over time? So that's where you'll see some of the categories that are focused on performance, but then also how are we growing year over year? We go to the next slide. So the APR has four different scoring categories, accredited with distinction, accredited, provisionally accredited, and unaccredited. And you can see the percentage of points earned. To be accredited, you must earn, for that three-year aggregate, 70% of points possible. The school years that are involved with this are again, 2122, 2223, and 2324. In the fall of 2024, the state will identify their initial classification of accreditation levels for all the school districts in the state, all public school districts in the state of Missouri. So as a district for the 2122 school year, the district earns 65.7 points possible. And again, this does not impact our current accreditation status because there are two additional years for us to data gather, gather data around. But for the 2122 school year, we earned 65.7% of points possible, which puts the district, if nothing changed in the next two years, in the provisionally accredited category. But that will not happen. There are scoring categories, target, on-track, approaching, and floor. So some of the information that I'm going to share will have these identifiers next to them. Really, target and on-track are the two highest performing categories. Floor and approaching are the lowest two. So under English Language Arts, we were in the approaching designation for both all students and student group. Student group represents all of the subgroup categories in the state combined into one collective, what they call a student group. So it represents our students, for example, with IEPs, our students on frame renewed lunch, other subgroup categories around ethnicity, all of those. All of those are pulled into one achievement group. And so for all, all of our kids, as well as students that qualify under student group, we were in the approaching category. It may be difficult to see on the screen, but maybe a little easier at your computer in the top right hand corner. That MPI or MAP Performance Index, that represents the state's performance in comparison to our performance to maybe see where the distinction are, the distinction is between our performance and the rest of the state. In mathematics, if you could go back please, mathematics, we saw again approaching category designations for all students and for our student group. Because we are in the approaching category, we, I didn't mention this for ELA, we earned 50% of points possible. And for both ELA, math and science academic achievement. For science, we saw approaching category performance for all of our kids as well as our student group category. In social studies, we earned approaching designation for all students, but we did see a higher performance by our student group. We actually outperformed the growth of all of our kids. And so we earned 75% of points available in that category or we were on track. Under academic achievement growth, so really they're looking at how are we growing year over year? The district fared better in, in the growth category for English Language Arts. We earned 75% of points possible to put us in the above average designation. In mathematics, not quite as successful. We earned less than 50% of points possible for all students in growth year over year. And just over 60% of points possible in our student group category, which put us in the average designation for student group math achievement. Some other additional areas of APR performance were success ready. And so part of that college and career readiness assessments, ACT, SAT, being the, the highest number of assessments that we provide. We also look at ACT work keys for our kids that are heading right to work. That's another assessment. We also look at the AccuPlacer, which is a higher ed assessment that many of our community colleges give. Unfortunately, the district did not earn at least 40% of points possible to earn any points in this, in this particular category. This obviously connects with our ACT composite. And just simply the number of students that are participating in these college and career readiness assessments. That's definitely an area that we know we need to grow in future years. Also, another category or component of success ready is the number of advanced credits our students are earning. That's college credit that they're earning while they're in high school. And we earned enough college credits last year from our graduating seniors to earn 50% of those points and the approaching designation. Our graduation rate, we earned 75% of points possible to be awarded the on track designation. As well as an on track designation for our 180 day graduate follow up. Any questions on the performance criteria before we get to continuous improvement? Okay, moving on to continuous improvement. These are new categories. So again, if you are familiar with M SIP 5, the categories that I shared previously, those have been categories that the state has looked at for many years. These are new categories that the state is interested in. Number one, does the district have a strategic plan that addresses areas of improvement? We, because we are in process of developing that plan this year, the state awarded us a full percent or full 100% of points earned in that category. The response to standards is actually a student survey that's going to be made available to our students in the 2324 school year. The state is also interested in the ways in which the district is assessing climate and culture of its staff. And so because we have those measures in place, we were rewarded 100% of points in that category. Some additional success ready categories that the state is looking at. Number one, KEA is for kindergarten readiness. So the district is in the process of adopting a kindergarten readiness assessment to use starting next year. So we were able to earn those points. The ICAP is the four year plan that our, all of our eighth grade students develop in the spring of their eighth grade year to guide their course selections during high school. We have a process in place and so we earn a full points in that category. Our attendance percentage, that percentage of students attending at least 90% of the time, which was at 69.3, did not meet the threshold to earn any points this year. We also did not pursue any CTE expansion, which can, can earn us two additional points. Last year, that again is something that we, we will be remedying this year. And then regarding our financials for the district, the financial audit, the ASBR report and timely submission of our core data throughout the year, the district was able to earn all points possible in those categories. So with all of those points tallied together, that's what got us to that 65.7% of points possible for the 2122 school year. Now, the last slide I will share, again, going back to those comparison districts. This is public information, so this information is available for anyone in the state to look at. Again, the accreditation of Raytown Quality Schools is fully accredited right now. But as we look at not only Raytown, but districts around us, many districts are feeling that sense of urgency around district improvement, the way Raytown is. And even those districts that are accredited are barely reaching that 70% threshold. So as you can see that the, the, the challenge for our district to, to do better is a challenge that many of our, our comparable districts are also facing, not only in the, in the KC metro, but across the state. So we know that we have some focused work to accomplish in the years to come. We feel confident about what those processes will look like and we are excited to bring more information to the board in future months. To talk through how we will begin the, a very targeted systematic school progress planning that will begin in the 2324 school year. But happy to entertain any other questions the board might have at this point.
So looking at the continuous improvements in regards to points, the only opportunity we really have to score higher than that is to in the attendance area and the CTE expansion. And the CTE expansion is a career technical portion?
Yes, we also have the opportunity to earn some of those college and career readiness assessment points that we did not earn any of this year. We also through growth on MAP and then of course, and ACT can, can continue to earn more points as we move categories from approaching to on track.
Like something like Herndon didn't earn us any points in that area.
So they earned us points, but it looks at the graduating classes of, of both, both schools. And so we did not have, we had a lot of Herndon students earning those college and career readiness assessment points. But we needed at least 40% of points possible for all graduates. And so we did not have enough collective points earned, which is why we, we did, we were on the floor in that category.
I appreciate putting the comparison districts when it comes to the APR. But I'm also looking forward to not burying our head in the sand and, and thinking that, oh, well, it's not as bad as we, we we might think it is because it truly is. I don't know. I think we've been looking at are these scores lowering for quite some time? And not exactly addressing that issue. So looking forward to what you guys will propose, even in when it comes to the strategic planning and, and the climate and the success ready, you know, just as the comments we heard today. I think I'm looking forward to, like I said, looking forward to what you guys had because we definitely can't continue doing what we've been doing. And knowing that, knowing where we are is, as they say, half the battle. But I know there's a lot of work and, but I'm confident as well that we can turn this around. And I don't know that it's been any lower than it is now. So I think you're, you're, you're the man for the job. You guys are, I can see a big difference already. And just even in my, in my own household. So I like the, the targeted effort when it comes to instruction in our, in our school district and making improvements in that area. Because this is a, a lot of the, we can't, we can't lose sight of the fact that educating our students is the primary reason that we exist. And you know, we have all those other factors, but you know, this is, this is the litmus test. This is, this is what we have to focus everything that we do, every goal that we have has to, and not just for, for scores, but just for improvement in our community and the success of our students later down the line. So I, I'm looking forward to being part of meeting this challenge.
Dr. Griner, I just wanted to say I really appreciate the thoroughness of the report. And also I know that there's seemingly a dark shadow that might be appearing, but I'm thankful for the fact that we have an additional two more years to make improvements. And as Alonso has stated, I do have confidence in you and in Dr. Penelope and the rest of the team. That we're not going, this is just, just a stump in the path. And we're going to remove the stump and we're going to be where we need to be as a district. I do have great confidence in the fact that you all will get us there.
I just wanted to take a moment just to thank Dr. Greiner and his team for the work that they're doing. You mentioned the thoroughness of the report. And I know for our new board members, this was a lot to take in. You have this information. We're available at any time to answer any questions that you may have because it is a lot to take in. We wanted to put the report out there in is a capacity that allows everybody to understand where we are because this is a collective approach. One of the things that Dr. Greiner and Dr. Moore have been doing this year is really working closely with our principals to drill down into this work. It's more than just looking at numbers and saying, okay, this is what students are demonstrating at this particular point in time. Because oftentimes when we receive these data points in the world of education, we call this lagging data. By the time we get this data, we're well underway with the next school year. So it's based on our observations, but it's also based on conversations with our school leaders, with our teachers, just for us to continue to look at other data points to determine whether we're teaching our children, not teaching our children to a test, but making sure we're educating our children because it's beyond just making sure our children graduate. It's making sure that they're equipped when they leave. And I think Amaya said it best, when we look at those goals that we've identified for this school year. If you look at it, one of the goals is diversity, equity and belonging. A lot of this data is reflecting that belongingness, if you will. Where do I belong? Do I belong in gifted classes? Do I belong or in challenged classes? Our children need to feel like they belong. And I think our teachers with all of the school visits that I've conducted and that we continue to visit, our teachers are doing a really good job. They are doing a really good job. We know what the work looks like and I know that it's all hands on deck. This isn't going to flip overnight, but I know that we are engaged in conversation, engaged in work and trying to find creative and innovative ways to give our children core first instruction. Oftentimes you'll hear people talk about interventions. You don't intervene if you give it to them the first time. You give kids quality instruction in the classroom, the planning, the preparation and the understanding and the, of the direction which we need to go. That's how you begin to make shifts and begin to make change and making sure kids understand this data as well. If they understand the data, they know that their ownership is also important in doing this work because it's not a one sided approach. When we look at this information, looking at attendance, making sure our children come to school regularly on time. That is a part of my spiel that I speak to children when I go into school visits. We need our children in school. If they're not in school, then they're not learning. But we also get hit with the daily rate of attendance. We need to make sure that children have access when they're in schools, that they're engaged and that the lessons are based on their lived experiences, not just teaching to a standard, but teaching our children so that they are lifelong learners, that endured learning. Are they able to apply this information outside of the school? It has to be relevant. It has to be real. It has to be meaningful and it takes a lot of work. And again, I know that within our teaching cadre, we have teachers who are willing to go above and beyond. We have administrators, many of them are here tonight, who are willing to go above and beyond. And it's not about talking about discipline. It's really talking about instruction. Instruction drives everything as far as I'm concerned. If you have engaged children, you minimize the behaviors. And so we need to make sure that we're encouraging our children to come to school. When they come, they feel like they belong, but they're also engaged in the learning process. And so again, with our parents as partners, with our board, with our staff, we're going to continue to push forward and make sure we do what's best for our children. No excuses. When we look at this data, it is an anomaly around the nation when we look at test scores of our school districts. And this is just one indicator of schools. This is not determining whether a school is successful, whether the children are successful, but this is what's put out there and we're held accountable to it. So again, as board members, even for our board members who are new, I encourage you to go visit our schools. So see what's happening in our buildings and to, I'm going to go ahead and put you out there, Dr. Greiner. To go along with Dr. Greiner when he's having those data discussions, when you see the data charts on the wall and you see principals talking about what's happening in schools and what they're doing to make those shifts when children aren't meeting those daily benchmarks. Not just a yearly benchmark, but daily benchmarks. I'm going to get off my soapbox right now, but anyway, we, we're going to get this done.
Thank you. Thank you. Next we have our insurance renewal, health, dental and vision.
Mr. President. I'm going to accept the health, dental, vision and life insurance renewals as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. In discussion.
Were you just coming in case we had questions or you? Well, I mean, 0% looks pretty good to me. Is that, is that what it is? We can't get better than zero, right? I mean, I just.
Microphone.
Well, I would say go ahead and do the presentation.
Okay, we'll be brief. So first of all, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Martin Knox. As you all know, health insurance, dental, vision, those coverages are critical to the efforts that we, that we put forth to attract and retain staff. The district spends roughly about $10 million to support our staff and maintaining those coverages. And we work together with CBIZ, which is, is a reputable local broker here in town or in, in the Kansas City area. And so representatives of CBIZ are here today. Mr. Dave Johnson is here to put on a presentation and then afterward, of course, I'd like to receive your support in voting for renewal. Mr. Dave Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. My name is Dave Johnson. This is Michelle Khan. We're with CBIZ Benefits and Insurance Services. We've worked with the district for many years now on your benefit programs. I'm just going, just going to take a few minutes if I can learn how to use this, just to go through this presentation very quickly. The most important point is yes, the medical plan is renewing with no increase. There is going to be a slight statutory change and I'll get into that in just a minute and of course, answer any questions. Whoops. Where am I pointing? How's that? No, the other way. That's. No, the other way, that's why. Uh, last year, just to re- review, last year, we also had a zero percent increase on the medical plan. Uh, the dental plan had a slight increase, the vision plan renewed with no increase, and the life and AD and D renewed to the increase. The reason I mention these is because they're all in an extended rate guarantee, so we don't have to worry about this year. They're all gonna be rolling on to next year. Medical plan will be the only plan. Uh, unfortunately, we can't get more than a one-year rate guarantee, or I wouldn't have to come and talk at your board meeting. The renewal rating period that the insurance company used for this year's renewal, so your plan runs on a July one to July one basis. The claims that they use, because your claims determine what your rates are, that they use for the calendar year twenty-two. Uh, the most important thing here is, is that your per member, per month claims numbers decreased from the prior year to this year. That's um, miraculous is a little strong, but that's really, really good. It's really unusual. So um, your membership is to be commended for that. Um, the statutory change I mentioned is on the Qualified High Deductible Healthcare Plan. Currently, that deductible is twenty-eight hundred dollars, and that has to increase according to the Department of Labor to three thousand dollars. That's in order to keep the plan embedded, which simply means that for any individual that's on the plan, the most they'd have to pay in deductible expenses is three thousand dollars. If they happen to have family coverage, if the deductible is any lower than three thousand dollars, one individual would have to meet the full family deductible. So we always try to maintain that three thousand dollars. That's why it's at that level. We do have a couple of uh, really enhancements to the plan in terms of if someone is using coupons or rebates for specialty drugs. Currently, the plan cannot take advantage of that, so only the member gets a discount. By making these two minor changes, the plan's gonna be able to get to realize the discounts for those two components as well, so that's a positive. This is your claim report, not, don't want to get into a whole lot of detail here. Um, this is the information that uh, Mr. Gibson looks at every month. So you can see the most important numbers here up at the very top in the upper right-hand corner. The per member, per month trend for the last twelve months or, or the calendar year was a negative three percent. We then break that out by plan, we then break it out by different categories, active employees, retirees, et cetera. You can see here just a, the monthly claims numbers. And down at the bottom, uh, Mr. Gibson mentioned about ten million dollars for the medical plan. Of that, eight, almost nine million dollars of that is claims. So anytime you don't incur claims, you don't have to pay for it, and that's good news for the following year. So that's why we encourage the programs that are implemented to try to keep people out of the doctor's office, obviously making sure they're getting the right care, but making sure they're managing that care, getting the right prescriptions, et cetera, uh, to make sure the plan stays competitive. Uh, these is to co-pay programs. Again, this is not going, the, the important thing here is, is that for the co-pay card accumulator program, which is on the high deductible plan, by utilizing this program, you, the plan is gonna save about twenty-one thousand dollars a year. And on the other plans, which are the PPO programs, which have drug copays, by implementing this plan, the plan's gonna save about twenty-one thousand dollars. So that's savings that goes right back into the plan. These are the rates that are in place for the plans. You can see the total premium. So for instance, on the three thousand dollar Blue Saver, that's the Qualified High Deductible Healthcare Plan, seven hundred and seventy dollars a month, and that's what the district pays toward the plan. And so the employee doesn't have to pay anything. One additional benefit that an employee would get, a member would get for enrolling on the Qualified High Deductible Plan is the district pays seven hundred and fifty dollars into their health savings account. Because they're on the qualified plan, they can open a health savings account, the district gives them seven hundred and fifty dollars. So even though they have the three thousand dollar deductible, they get that seven hundred and fifty dollars that would hopefully protect them from any immediate visit they might have. You can see all of the plans past the three thousand dollar plan. The employee has to pay a component. Uh, on the twenty-five hundred dollar PPO plan, they have to pay fifty dollars. And then the fifteen hundred dollar plan, they have to pay a hundred and sixty-six. The thousand dollar plan is closed right now, so only people that have already been enrolled in that plan are still, uh, are allowed to stay in that plan. It's not closed, it's closed for new membership. And these are all the plans side by side. Two traditional PPO plans, the fifteen hundred, the twenty-five hundred, those are different than the high deductible plan, because you have copays to go for office visits with, with the physician. So someone that's not comfortable having that big upfront deductible, might choose those plans. They also have for prescription drugs, copays, instead of having to meet the big deductible upfront. Now, I would argue that by giving them seven hundred and fifty dollars and having a lower premium in that high deductible plan, they can save a lot of money to do that, to pay for a lot of those visits that they would have to pay for upfront in the high deductible plan. The, and again, preventive care is all covered at a hundred percent. So if someone is enrolled on the plan and they don't have any other kind of expenses through the year, except preventive care, that's covered a hundred percent by the plans. Uh, and from here on are just exhibits, and these are just, you'll see in your packet, the dental plan summary, but there's a high and a low plan. That must be it. So I know that was lightning fast. Um, I wanted to be quick, I tried not to hurry, but if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
How, how many years have we been doing the uh, HSA? Uh, and how, how many years have we been at seven fifty?
The seven fifty has been, it's been several years for that. I can't, I couldn't tell it off the top of my head, but it's been several years.
That was good to getting several employees into that plan by doing that. If we looked at maybe increasing that amount, that contribution into the AS, into the HSA to get some more employees to go into that plan.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly something you can always do, that, so the seven fifty is a great benefit. Um, and you actually give it in, it right in the swoop, right at the beginning of the year, as opposed to maybe a monthly amount. The thing to keep in mind about the seven fifty is, once you give that to the employee, it's their money. So it is immediately goes into their HSA, they spend that however they want to. So uh, we have clients that do a little bit more, we have clients that don't do any. So the, the fact that you're actually contributing some is a, is a great benefit, but certainly it's something we could look at in the future.
You think it's good, that project's good to stay at that number?
I, 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 I think it's great that you're staying at that number and not reducing it, certainly. Be, because that happens.
Twenty-two fifty for them to pay toward their deductible then, really, right?
Yeah, yeah. And with um, I would estimate that probably very close to eighty percent of your population spends less than five thousand dollars on the plan. Generally, that's, that's about the, the number. Um, probably anywhere from sixty to seventy percent spend less than twenty-five hundred dollars. So that's something that an employee really needs to think about, obviously, and think about for their family too, if their family has medical expenses. You, you, you're paying fifty dollars a month to get in the twenty-five hundred dollar PPO plan, just so you can have a um, a, a co-pay for your doctor's office visit. Seven hundred and fifty dollars pays for, depending on the type of offices, at three or four office visits at least. So uh, every year, we have a, a third-party firm that we work with, Benefits Direct, that does employee education for all the employees. They have an opportunity to meet one-on-one with a counselor and can discuss those things. The Benefit Guide, which actually you approved in um, the Consent Agenda, uh, that has some information in it as well about those plans. So you're getting a good amount of education. I was looking up to see how many folks you have. You have um, five hundred and sixty-four employees and six hundred and forty members in the Qualified High Deductible Healthcare Plan, and you have five hundred and forty-two members in the twenty-five hundred dollar PPO plan. So you're almost evenly split, just a little bit more in the HSA. And then forty people in the fifteen hundred and only eleven in the thousand. You, you've got a really good number in that high deductible plan. So it's, that's encouraging.
Can you explain to me what renewal continued to include wellness fund for forty thousand dollars? What are you saying there?
Yes, so the wellness funds are used by various folks in the district for wellness activities. Uh, there's an employee that works uh, with you all, one of our employees, Michelle Cruz, who's a wellness coordinator, and she works really with Carl quite a bit on wellness activities and things that, that um, the district might work with employees on, like say, maybe buy T-shirts for a five K run, or might um, uh, you know, different districts do different things, but that money is built into the plan so that there is a fund to be used, so that doesn't have to come out of district funds.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Thank you, thanks for your time.
Then we could take take your vote.
Go to the front.
Now we have the selection of a new student information system provider. Or motion?
Mr. President. I'm with Board to approve focused school software as a new student information system provider. Target implementation date of twenty twenty-four summer school session, a year one subscription fee of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. Implementation cost of ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and twenty attendance kiosk at a cost of eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Implementation cost includes project management, data migration, and training.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. You have any information?
Yeah, I, I had a brief uh, presentation to kind of give a little bit of transparency about, about why we're making that move, so um, I'll hustle. Uh, so uh, really, I just wanted to cover the big five questions whenever you're changing your SIS. Obviously, why are we making this move? Um, what was the selection process that we went through? Uh, what product are we recommending? And then um, kind of why are we recommending that product? And then, of course, the final one is when are we going to be making this change? And so really, the why is Tyler Technology, the co- the company that provides SysK twelve, the solution, announced last summer that they were going to be sunsetting their product in June of twenty twenty-five. And as part of this announcement, they were really kind of uh, mentioning this agreement they had with Infinite Campus that their school districts could move to their, the Infinite Campus solution for free. And then they would then be the financial uh, service provider, the financial uh, software provider for a lot of these schools. And so along, to kind of summarize, the, the student information system uh, that we currently use, SysK twelve, is gonna be out of service on June of twenty twenty-five. With that uh, pulse, our data reporting solution will also be ending in twenty twenty-five. One quick note, though, as I mentioned, they are going to still provide support for their financial services, the SysBen, which is uh, our HR payroll and finance provider right now. And so when we did, we uh, the district did decide to not just go the easy button and just migrate straight to Infinite Campus, uh, we released an RFP in December. We had four uh, companies come back with, with a response, but really two were complete proposals. Okay, we had a committee of about forty staff members, and that included teachers, administrators, secretaries, counselors, social workers. We really tried to get our stakeholders in to help us make this election, because really, a student information system really kind of uh, deal, a lot of different staff members are going to work with that, uh, with, with whatever we pick. And we scored it, we had a, we had a pretty exhaustive scoring rubric that we used. It was based on the, the proposal, so each company did mark a lot of different items. They had a presentation, and then obviously we did a school visit as well. Uh, we are going, the, the Student Information Selection Committee recommends the Raytown School District Select Focus as the SIS provider. This recommendation, and I think you've mentioned, Mr. Moore, includes the purchase of attendance kiosks and that we, uh, that Focus host our solution. So we would not host that on our own software, we would use cloud to host that. And this recommendation includes the district purchase, all training and migration services recommended by Focus. Um, kind of a couple of the reasons why um, this Focus did uh, score considerably higher than the other product on our most important items. Meaning um, we had several items that we thought were mandatory, that the system respond to and score high on, and Focus outperformed the other one in terms of Raytown. Focus also offers a lot more flexibility to support a lot of unique Raytown programming, meaning Raytown has their own way of doing a lot of things, and Focus gave us the software that would help us um, really automate and do that. And then finally, Focus is making a concerted effort into moving into Re- to Missouri, since Desi no longer has a recommended SIS provider. SysK twelve was the Desi-recommended student information system, but obviously um, Desi's no longer gonna recommend that solution. Um, finally, and the big question is, we are looking to make this move in next year's summer school, so summer school of twenty twenty-four. That means we have the year to move our data over, to train our staff, and really take advantage of some of that unique programming that Focus offers. That's gonna require some work on the district to kind of build in some of that customization and make sure it's suited for Raytown, but we, of course, have the year to do that. Um, the technology department's going to work on uh, the, the first job, which is getting that data moved over and moved over accurately. Then after that, we're gonna start working with our trainers, and the trainers are not gonna ta- train the technology staff, they're gonna train the staff staff. Uh, they use a train-to-train model, I think that's kind of tried and true, but they're gonna be working with the different groups, that are our project manager, to make sure that they understand how librarians use our system, to make sure Focus is gonna work for our librarians and all the different positions in our district. Um, a couple of milestones, we are gonna look to start building um, the twenty twenty uh, four, excuse me, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four uh, secondary schedules in December of this year. That's kind of a really big job that our secondaries have to do. We're gonna start a little bit early, because we're gonna actually use the new system to build that new schedule. And uh, I'm kind of excited about that, because this is one of the areas that Focus is really gonna shine, is the ability for us to build a sk- a, a schedule in a much different way than Tyler Tech does right now. And obviously, training's gonna happen throughout the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, but really, um, like I said, I would expect that um, that'll get much more serious as the year goes. I went through that very quick, were there any questions I could answer about the process?
I was just curious, other than the scheduling component, what were some of those priorities where Focus scored highest?
Yeah, so um, one of the, a couple of the things that Focus was really good about is, um, I want to say that uh, they, they had a very good online portal, and that meaning the parent portal that our stat, that our parents are going to use, our, our residency department actually preferred theirs, meaning they thought it was going to be much better, much easier for our families to use. Couple of the things is, it was going to be smartphone accessible. We're really excited about that. Um, technically, you can do SysK twelve on your smartphone, but it's a bit of a nightmare. The new system's gonna be much more adaptive to whatever devices, and so that was one of the big ones. Um, it was in a couple of other, other areas, um, the grade book, we really liked, uh, the teachers liked the grade book in Focus. It was a very good grade book. But I'd say the bigger thing, when Focus came, we would ask them a question, and they said, yes, we can do that, and let me show you how to do that on our system. It was that kind of presentation that really sold us on the product. The presenter knew the product, knew the product well, and didn't have a pre- pre-described way of how to use their system in order to get to the finish line.
So what does that mean about, when, when it comes to security, being able to make sure cyber secure and things? This is gonna be a new system, we're gonna be changing over. Uh, and then since it's so much, this is easily accessible for us, is there a security threat or risk when it comes to that?
Yeah, and so built into the RPIs, they did have to maintain certain levels of security. And so part of, a couple of the things that we did um, that, that we did say that we had to do is, obviously, it doesn't need to be hosted in the United States, so it is gonna be cloud-hosted in the United States, but we have the ability to do pen testing and that on whatever, uh, on whatever um, the cloud provider they're posting the, the software on. So um, to be honest, it, it was a little bit of, that, that was something that we had to kind of come to, to grips with as a technology department. We take security very seriously, and one of the things that we think we do well is secure our servers here. Um, we wouldn't uh, be okay with, with doing that unless Focus answered the, answered those mandatory items with a clearly delineated way of how they're going to secure our data.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Where are the old records gonna be stored? Who's gonna store them?
Yeah, so the plan is to move everything currently in SysK twelve into the new system. Yeah, so the plan is to move everything currently in SIS K twelve into the new system. Okay. Even if they're no longer students. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a vote. Motion passes. Next, we have the RFP for online learning platform.
Good evening and good board. I have a couple of RFPs to review, uh, seeking the board's approval tonight. The first is for uh, the opportunity for us to explore options for online learning.
Let us take a motion first.
Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. My bad. Motion.
Move that the board approved request bids. For new RFP online learning platform for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Sorry about that.
No problem. My fault. So again, we are looking to explore what other options might exist uh, for online learning for our students. We have partnered with Fuel Ed for the last several years. And believe that we can do better. And so we're asking for the board's approval for us to uh, receive bids from other companies and. Uh, examine the ways in which online learning can better meet the needs of our students with a new. Service provider.
Sounds good to me. Questions? Take the vote. Motion passes. Next, we have the RFP for technology services audit.
Mr. President. I'm with the board to request bids for RFP for technology services audit.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
So again, uh, we are asking the board for their permission to receive bids for uh. Partner with a technology audit. Firm, uh, lots of changes in education. Uh, as I mentioned before, uh, when talking about the district report card and the end of end of performance report. Um, we must uh, adapt to the way we are supporting our students and our staff. Regarding student achievement, and we are also interested in doing more to support technology integration in our district. And so part of that is working with uh, a third party to give us an objective analysis of our current. Spending and staffing in our technology department. So that we might consider ways in which we can uh, repurpose. Resources to provide boots on the ground, technology integration support for our teachers and our students. So this audit will not only examine current reality of technology services, it will also. Uh, give us recommendations for how we might be able to, again, provide. Technology integration support and a coaching support for teachers and students. As we have those devices in the hands of our students every day. That we can maximize technology as a learning accelerator. Currently, we do not have any co- formal coaching support for technology integration in the in the district. And so we need to figure out a way to provide that in a cost neutral. Uh, budget.
Thank you.
When was the, I have a question. When was the last audit done? Do we know when the last technology audit was done or if it's ever been done before?
I do not know if and when a technology audit's been performed.
It was great. Thank you.
I probably need some of that. So I can just be on surfing. Alright. We have our first read of uh. Policies. Which in here. These are the policies that Ms. Bobby's that were we. Were reviewed on March thirteenth, twenty twenty three. By the policy review. Committee meeting.
Mr. President, so I just had a question because Jace. Went away. So JFCI student drug testing is listed, but there's no attachment for that one. There's supposed to be an attachment for that one.
What we're going to do, working very closely with our athletic directors and our principals. Um, what we're going to do is leave the policy in place so that we can use it as we see fit. But what we have to do is make an adjustment to the contract. Um, in the policy, it says we may use this, and so we're going to leave it in place, but we. Aren't going to use it the way we've been using it because before it's been mandated. Uh, and again, listening to our athletic directors and our principals and other stakeholders within the district, uh, taking the policy away. Um, we need to have it in place, but we don't have to do it every month the way it's been done. So the only thing we have to do is bring back to um, uh, the the board uh, and looking at the contract itself because the contract. Uh, needs to be updated.
Okay, so there's going to be change in the student drug testing then?
No, sir. We're just going to maintain the policy in case we need to use it. Uh, the language says may, um, but we've been using it as if it were a directive and it says shall. Um, we're just going to exercise our uh, authority to use it when we deem appropriate.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be on the list then?
No, sir.
In the top enclosure list, but it's.
That's correct. That's correct.
I think it was uh, policies that were reviewed and. Determination was made. As she stated.
Well, changes have been made to it, though, in a sense, hasn't it?
No, ma'am. Um, we've been working, as you indicated in your uh, briefing earlier, we've uh, been speaking with uh, Missouri School Boards Association. Uh, and because the language says we may uh, implement this policy. We're going to keep it in place, um, because we have been executing it as it shall be. Um, and again, working with our athletic directors, um, we're maintaining our students, making sure that they are. Um, not in violation of the policy and we can execute as we deem appropriate. Uh, I guess on a case by case basis, if you will, so not removing the policy. What we had done is we've done work um, in speaking with our neighboring districts. To see whom else uh, still exercises this uh, policy. And none of the other school districts do, however, it's still in place. And so we're going to follow suit and maintain it and keep it in place. We just need to go back and look at our contract. For the uh, company that exercises those uh, tests, if you will.
What what has that been costing us?
Um, I believe it was about ten thousand. Terry, what's that number? About ten thousand.
A month or a year?
A year.
Are you? Okay.
Alright. Any other questions? Alright, uh, we'll be having the executive session. Need a motion to uh. Hold the close session.
I'm with the board hold a close session, want a close record and close vote for the purpose of considering the following matters, six one zero point zero two one. Legal actions, causes of action or litigation, uh, six one zero point. Zero two one, hiring, firing, discipling or promoting employees, six. One zero point zero two one, individually identifiable personnel records and six one zero. And six one zero point zero two one, records protected from disclosure by law.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Motion to adjourn. Reese, okay. Don't, we're going to go into recess for. Seven minutes.